Morning, everybody. We begin our meetings with the pledge of allegiance if you join me.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of June thirteenth, twenty twenty four. We're gonna start with the Zoom members. We get Captain Stacy with Jude Gates with the sheriff, Catherine Mann, and
Special.
Special, yeah, Major Special. We have Jason Smith and Michelle Schmidt. In the room, we have Chuck Nickerson. We have, we have John Mara from the county's attorney's office. We have Jason Henry, Allison Kowalski, we have Commissioner Coyle.
Good morning.
We have Commissioner Godu.
Good morning.
Leila. We have a member of the public in the room, former member Tom Tom Morello, and I am the chair, Brian Churchall. So we'll begin with openings for the supplier of electricity.
We move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with the recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
So, yes. Okay. Looks like obviously our NC flooring facilities.
And we're going to wait a few minutes on the award from, on that one. I'm sorry. Okay, I moved to award the proposal for flooring to, and we don't have that, I'm sorry, it's, it's here. I have it. I moved to award the flooring to Conduz the award for replacement of the flooring to Conduz Flooring Incorporated for an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, but as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion has been made. Seconded. Any discussion on this? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Jude, have you had a chance to, um, uh, are you ready to, to award that?
I'd move to two.
I'm not quite ready yet, no.
We're gonna make a motion to table for now, then.
So, thank you.
Motion's been made, table seconded. On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes to table for now.
Thank you.
Um, we're going to do consent agenda.
Um, I move to approve the May twenty-third, uh, twenty twenty-four public minutes and the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments, additions, subtractions in the minutes? Have you been looking fine?
Robust. A lot. Thank you.
So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Surplus equipment request?
Um, I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight A and declare a list of all non-functioning radio and dispatch equipment from the Sheriff's Office surplus with the items to be properly disposed of.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on this one? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Move on to accounts payable list.
I move to approve the June thirteenth, twenty-four, twenty-four accounts payable list total three million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Godu?
Uh, I'll be abstaining because there's thousands of dollars of receipts missing from the Harvey warrant.
Any further comments?
Just that the Harvey warrant is almost all uh, complete, and thank you, Chuck, for the detailed analysis of the warrant. Yes.
So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Abstain.
And I vote yes. So that's two, zero, one, abstention. Commissioners report. Any, any commissioners talking about it?
I went to the resident council meeting, um, this week, which was really nice, um, for the residents meeting. I got to talk a little bit about the role as, the role of the commissioners. So it was a nice opportunity to engage with the residents and, um, a big experience. So I was glad that I got to be a part of that.
Right. Commissioner Godu, do you have anything?
Nothing right now.
Okay. Uh, I'm just gonna report that, um, last week I was able to go into the jail and I took a tour with Lieutenant Norton. And, um, I really have to say one thing. As I walked through, the staff was really very professional, very courteous. Uh, I was incognito. I was in my, you know, dungarees or jeans, I should say, dungarees. It's probably a seventies term, but I didn't have a tie or anything.
Not kind of.
I didn't wanna be a, I didn't wanna be a high-value hostage, so. Um, and so we toured everything. I was there for, for quite a long time. I was able to see, um, you know, areas that I hadn't seen previously, and, uh, everything was good. And then I ended up at the end.
They tried to keep him.
Yeah, no, no, I, I mean, uh.
He's high-value.
Anyway, uh, I, I just wanna say the staff was really, um, excellent. You know, I asked them questions that they went along, you know, how things and how do you like the job? And they were, they all were very, very happy. Um, I saw that, that big guy there. I forget his name, but, um, I mean, I'm like, oh, okay, I understand why no one may, may wanna do anything wrong here, but we come up with big guys in the jail.
Oh, I haven't had any.
Yeah, he supposedly, he did the Amazon, um, Survivor thing back in where he's from.
Oh, I mean, Oliver, I'm.
So I was like, really? He's got those skills and he can survive jungle warfare? I'm like, okay.
He should. Pretty good. He came from Brazil.
Yeah, that's it.
And he has, was military, high-level stuff over there, and he loves being over here.
Nice guy, really nice guy. So, I mean, I, I couldn't ask for any, anything better, to be honest. So anyway, I just, it went well. Um, and then we can talk offline about a couple of things that, um, you know, some things that we can improve down the road, not, not necessarily that way, but, um, but anyway, it was, it was all good. So, all right, so now I'm gonna go to the Department of Corrections, the female housing agreement.
Uh, I move to approve the Merrimack County Department of Corrections Female Frightened Housing Agreement for the period of July first, twenty twenty-four, for a one-year term as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Commissioner Coyle?
Just, um, I can't remember. I think that was pretty commensurate with what our rate was last year, but is this fifty-seven, forty?
It's the same.
It's the same. Okay. I thought it was relative. I just remember exactly.
They're the only ones that go up to an open-ended contract. They'll just do it from year to year, but all the contracts are that same rate of hanging to just open them. That's why I don't come back in front of them.
That's, I just couldn't remember if it was changing or not because
No.
Okay, great. That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. And we still have Carol as well, as a not, you know, that's, I mean, we go anywhere, but.
Yeah.
Only Merrimack or two.
Uh, Sullivan. We have a couple out there. Mainly it's Carol. Then it's nice that Merrimack has full-time medical twenty-four hours. So we have something in that, in that area. We look to them.
Right.
Did we make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, seconded. On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Finance Office Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five benefits related payments.
Move to authorize the Finance Office process payments for fiscal year twenty twenty-five benefits-related items, including but not limited to the medical and dental claims, third-party administrative fees, various benefit premiums, stop loss fees, and workers' compensation claims.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this motion?
This is just administrative.
Yeah, just so we're never late on APs approved every other weekend, so.
Very good. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Flex the new bank account for the sheriff's money evidence.
I move to establish a new Rockingham County Non-Interest Bearing Bank Account at TB Bank for depositing all cash evidence seized upon arrest. The signers on the account are to be the county treasurer, Scott Friesley currently, and Senior Director of Finance, uh, Chuck Nickerson, as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance and the High Chair.
Okay, motion was made. Wait here a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Just, just to, just to note, this will not count as a new fund for the county. Um, this one class, a case, could have been custodial fund, because it's technically other people's monies that were, you know, keeping custody of. Um, is this the, the safer way to, to keep the, the money?
What's currently happening?
It's my sheriff's, and I'll, it's the sheriff, and describe her candidacy.
So what, what currently happens is, once it's subject to the release, we either have to have them come to the office and we're handing over physical cash that's coming out of an evidence bag and/or in the situations where a case has been adjudicated, if they're incarcerated somewhere else, there's no way for us to transfer that money incarcerated somewhere else, or if they now live out of state, uh, we have no mechanism to mail them essentially the check, uh, which would be easier. Uh, so it's a lot easier than, and it's just, it's really not good practice to hold large amounts of cash in evidence anyway.
Especially I have it.
Yeah, there's, there's two things that get people in trouble the most when it comes to evidence nationally, and that's drugs and money. And, uh, anything we can do to mitigate having them, uh, in evidence is a good thing.
So how does the cheat? So do we have, like, who's gonna be making these deposits and what's the, do we have a mechanism in place for like, how it's going to be administratively booked, like, logged, I should say?
All right, Catherine. Yeah, so, uh, Lieutenant Bennett, myself, and Jesse Way will be the, uh, people putting those together. We'll use the county, just like we do with other, uh, rep-type warrants, things like that. It'll all be documented. It'll be, uh, noted what case number in our IMC system, so there's a full tracking all the way through for reference. Uh, and then, you know, we'll make those deposits, um, and then make sure that everything's tied together right from the case itself to the bank, and then that way it can get fully reconciled.
Great.
And so the issuance of any checks for individuals that might be, and housed at a different, uh, jail or prison, um, would also work how the jail inmate checks do, which is like a fiduciary kinda thing that, um, basically sheriff's office put together a warrant. We would review it and then, and a process payment. It wouldn't go before the BOC for approval, because it's only a balance sheet, only type thing. It's basically, we're gonna throw a project code onto the accounts payable
Right.
account. So it's gonna, deposits will go into that account, and payments will also de-bet or reduce that viability for that cash being held on, on hand in that bank account.
Okay.
And it's a dedicated bond, not subject to any transfers?
Um, well, it's, it's, it's not gonna be a separate fund. It's a dedicated bank account, and the only thing that's gonna go in and out of that is purely for this, this purpose.
Can't be used for transfer?
No.
No, of course.
No.
Okay.
It's not our money.
On the, um, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes. And that will be that.
Okay, so now we're at Employee Retention and Engagement Opera Project Fund.
I move to approve the purchase of various gift cards as identified on the memo from Human Resources dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, utilizing category two-point-three-five of the Opera Project Funds as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made. Seconded. Discussion?
Just that we've had this
No, go ahead.
Just that we've had this pro, program ongoing since, uh, we got our, our project funds, and I think it's been a really, uh, positive morale booster for our employees. So, um, and it's nice to also support our, uh, local companies.
Commissioner Godu?
I was curious why we were you buying gift cards outside of Rockingham County? It seemed like that, that they were kinda up north, or maybe I wasn't familiar with the locations.
Yeah, there were a few that we did up north, um, because of the, um.
We have employees that wanna go up north? Is that the?
That, and we were, for some of those things, we wanted, like, special times of the year that people would might wanna ski or snowshoe or go tobogganing or tubing and stuff like that. We did that. Um, and I brought it before the board to ask, just we've done it like, um, two times a year that we've gone out on months to do that, just to give people an opportunity that may not have the finances to maybe do that, but they get a little gift card and are able to do something like that with their families. But in this instance, it's all within Rockingham County.
Okay.
We have North, we have to in Chester.
Okay. So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Exceptional request seven, three.
Um, I move to, um, I approve an exception request to Personnel Policy seven dash three, new appointment rate for a Finance Office employee, LC, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Finance.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
So this is the second finalist for the grant writer position, as unfortunately the first one fell through.
Further discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Reception request nine dash two.
I move to approve an exception request to Personnel Policy nine dash two, Earn Time J one, End of Employment for Long-Term Care Employee, JS.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, there was some.
I have discussion.
All right, Commissioner Godu.
Um, I'm not in agreement with, um, giving a hundred percent of this reimbursement for, uh, earned time. Uh, he's been working for us for three and a half years. Uh, the policy is fifty percent up until four years, uh, given the the dedication that he's had to, uh, the county, I would be in agreement with moving it to four-year, uh, level, which is basically a six-month grace period to get him into that, uh, category, which would allow him a seventy-five, seventy-five percent buyout, which I think is fair.
And further discussion?
Um, I mean, I just, again, I appreciate all the service and effort and, and immensely, um, but I'm just at the position that, um, you know, the policy's the policy that we need to just for uniformity and application that, um, you know, because I don't think it's, you know, uh, fair to differentiate, if you will, but there's no doubt in, you know, as a salaried employee, um, sort of the hours worked, and there's no doubt about the dedication, but I just feel like we need to stick now sort of to the policy.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we asked if this was a unique situation, if it's happened in the past? And you were gonna look something up about?
Oh, I did. Um, in twenty fifteen, you did not approve two, uh, staff numbers for it, and in twenty twenty, you approved one, and in twenty twenty-one, you approved one. And then, uh.
What did we approve? What was approved?
A hundred percent catch up. So two were not approved and two were approved, but since twenty twenty-one, um, with the policy, when we were doing the personnel policies and procedures, you kinda asked me to look at the payouts for that, and between the two focus groups, the non uh, management and the non-management, the discussion was to try to move the percentages. So we did change those percentages so that it would be a greater payout for those people at the different years of their employment. So that reflects in the PPP.
So we adjusted the PPP thereafter?
Yes, and, yes, in twenty, twenty twenty-two, we had finalized it, and we issued the policies in twenty twenty-one.
Does that change anybody's mind or standing at this point?
And we, when, just to be clear, in twenty twenty-two, we moved it up. We moved it up from twenty-five percent to fifty, or on fifty percent to seventy-five, and then we dropped it to the hun, the timeline to ten years for the hundred percent.
So that I'm gonna ask again, because you guys, when you made your comments, you, you didn't have that information, does that sound like anybody's opinion or mind or anything?
And I, I'm, I'm, I'm not changing my opinion. I, I personally Yeah, no, and I appreciate the, the insight. We've all, we've made some requests, but they were different percentages at the time. So nevertheless, uh, I think it's reasonable to give the extra six months of, uh, employment and put it in that category. That's
And you wanna change your mind?
No, I think it just affirms that when, because we increased the percentages, that, that
That we shouldn't make the exception.
Correct, because if, we made that to give people more at that point.
All right, so, so, all right, so I'm the, I'm the guy in the middle here, I guess, right now. Well, I mean, that's what I said. I
It's okay.
But, um, I, I would be personally in favor of this, um, simply because I know the dedication that Jason has brought.
Would you just clarify, what are you in favor of?
Of paying him out, uh, with his request?
A hundred percent?
A hundred percent.
Now we have
Well, so we have Well, so, so now, before you cut me off, let me
Sorry, I, that was unclear what you were getting.
Yeah, no, I know, exactly.
So, uh, and I wanna explain why. Uh, you know, Jason has, oh, sorry, JS has brought us from a two-star rating to a five-star rating. I've seen the work that he's done, maybe because my office is, is right down the hall. Um, and I know the dedication that he provided, and I know of all the extra time, it wasn't a nine-to-five, uh, situation, uh, you know, to a point where he was willing to even drive a bus. I mean, so for me, I, I would have, I would have done that. Now, knowing that two other commissioners have differences of opinion, I mean, if I was to hold my opinion, the motion would fail. So, um, so I'm going to, I'm, I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Godu because it's something versus, um, nothing, basically how I'm looking at it, because I, I mean, you need a majority, so.
Well, the, the default would be, just to be clear, if the motion fails, it's not to nothing, it's to the fifty, the
The policy.
The policy. Yeah, just so it's not like
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So
Oh, no.
Yeah, all right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Godu, uh, and, and we'll take it from there. So, um, further discussion?
I, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, change the, uh, exception request to, uh, read seventy-five percent payout instead of one-hundred percent payout.
Is that our second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Seconded. Uh, on, on the amendment to change, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Coyle?
No.
And I will vote yes. And now on the original motion, um.
I think we're, I think we just amended it, so I don't think
You amended it, and I'll just
We need to vote on it.
Sure.
So now on the, on the motion, um, Commissioner Coyle?
No.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
You, you voted, the motion was, the motion that we were
The original motion was for the request.
For one-hundred percent?
The amendment was to change it to the seventy-five, which we allowed the amendment. I mean, now we're voting on the whole
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought, yes. Okay, fair.
Makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, so now we are throughout.
The general leave.
Yeah, general leave.
I move to approve a general leave request for a Department of Corrections employee, DG, with counting portion of all benefits to continue for the period of June twentieth, twenty twenty-four through June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and the Superintendent.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Travel and training request?
I move to approve a travel and training request for two HR employees, J H and A K, to attend the Strategic HR at, uh, Mount Washington Conference in Bretton Woods, just New Hampshire, to be held for twenty-seventh, twenty, through the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, at an estimated total cost of four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and ninety-six cents, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Motion's been made and seconded. Second. Uh, any discussion on this? On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Request to reallocate ARPA funds in the sheriff's office?
I move to reallocate twenty-six thousand dollars from ARPA Category six-point-two-A to Category one-point-seven to cover the travel costs for Central Square related to to the CAT RMS dispatch project, as recommended by the High Chair.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, Commissioner Coyle?
Just, um, so, um, six-point-two-A was for the, um, that grant, the match for the grant fund that we didn't get. Um, there, it sounds like, it looked like there was thirty-seven thousand in that category, so, um, would it make sense to just take, because we're gonna move twenty-six, which I think makes a lot of sense, because everything I've seen from these the transition of the CAT RMS systems is like, there is a lot of training at various police departments and sort of there's always these like glitches that need to be sorted out, especially if we're tying it into is the system being tied into J one through the courts, too?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. So in terms of like the court communicating back that but would it then make sense to move the, reallocate the rest of that eleven thousand dollars and put it towards like FF and E or something, like, when we down the road for the building, like, move it towards, um, you know, a different category for the building at this point?
Yeah, we, we certainly don't need it in the category that it's in that grant. It's been denied twice. We're not gonna go for that. So wherever you'd like to reallocate that eleven thousand and change to, just whatever you'd like to do.
There's like, you'd be an opportunity to put it towards, we're gonna need stuff down.
Yeah, so we do have the overall, um, revenue replaced in our last revenue project, just for the building, so it could just fall for that if, if commissioners.
That seems like it makes the most sense, since it's gonna be sitting there, you, you know, after we move it.
Okay. Uh, any more discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Change order request for Central Square.
I move to approve a change order request for Central Square for an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars, as recommended by the High Chair.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any
This is just a follow-up, so for training on the new CAT RMS, which is
Yes. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
We are at the buttonhead updates. Uh, I'm going, I'm gonna go to Jason Henry first, because usually I go, I think, right last, or something like that.
Uh, currently, in-house population one-sixty, so we've had a good little jump. Obviously, it's summertime and Hampton Beach and everything. Um, a couple of COFA openings, which I posted, will be tested for those coming up. Uh, the new adult pension, uh, base standards and expected practices, uh, number five has come out, so we'll be going through all of our policies, making sure that they correlate to the new, uh, standards, and then also looking at the academy as well, making sure that they also reflect the new standards. So that'll be a little bit of work coming up for us. Hiring's still going well, um, thanks to the HR department in Autumn, and we got going on right now. Very good.
What's our capacity? You can hold just under four hundred. Guys, you wanna be nasty? Let everyone buy it.
I'm gonna go to Allison next.
Oh, gosh. Um, hey, so open enrollment, uh, is complete. Uh, we have one employee that did not complete the process, and we have one employee that did not complete the submission of the required form, uh, for buyout. So that is lowest. I wanna thank, um, I wanna thank the ODD for allowing my staff to come in this weekend, um, and go on to the floors of the nursing home, and also go over to the jail and sit over there and ask people to come up and get them through it. Um, it was a lot of undertaking, but we managed to fulfill what I required. We wanted a hundred percent, but we just missed it by one, but I think this is outstanding this year, outstanding work for everybody, and I can't say it enough.
I just wanna say real quick that Allison coming over to the building was a huge help, that she called me, said, can I come over? Like, yeah, anytime. Uh, again, I hired eighteen to twenty-six-year-olds. They're all, trying to tell them, well, they need to get this done. We told them every briefing, we posted their names, something else, but having somebody physically sit there and then our supervisors can go, you didn't get it done. You go. You didn't get it done. Go. And somebody holding a hand was the key for us, because we were still at fifty-five staff members that had not done it, and that was the biggest help.
All right.
And I think that it's, I mean, that's unprecedented. I think this is the highest I, in my time, that we've, and I'm sure former Commissioner Tom Morel could speak to this, in that it is like unprecedented how few people have completed it. And again, this is a credit to all the department heads for helping facilitate it, and Allison, particularly you and your team, for going on the floors, going to the overt, making, you know, making it happen, and it really helps
Yeah.
Everyone benefits from it.
And not only did we do a call to action, when, when people started to use it, there was a snafu at the very beginning. And then HR had to really pivot really quick, uh, and, and get it done. So kudos to everybody. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Everybody for, um,
Yeah.
getting that done.
I really wanna thank everybody. It was, this is, like I said, I've been here nine years. This is the biggest, uh, enrollment that we've had, where we have one outstanding person and one buyout thing, so you might see an exception come through for that, because I, I feel like that should be a no-brainer on that one. It just was a crossover of dates, uh, timeline for that person, but I'll bring that forward next week.
Okay.
The retiree benefits were completed last, um, concessions were completed last week. Their deadline for enrollment is the twenty-eighth of June, but it was just fun to have them back on the campus and have some time with them. Um, evaluations, thank you, everybody. I got a push from the payroll department as a reminder yesterday to get all of those evaluations in that are due for year-end, uh, by Friday, and I was happy to say to them, I had already been in touch with all the ODDs, and they had committed to getting that done by Friday, so I think we'll achieve, this will be the first time we'll achieve that goal by getting them all in by the deadline. Um, so we have, uh, MOU that we've been working on, that I believe we will have an answer to on Friday, tomorrow. I'm just waiting on that. And I think we've just been, um, you know, everything's been open enrollment. We're in audit right now, so we will be auditing everything, so that we'll be able to push things over while we have the, um, the green light to do that after we finish some other stuff. But I think we're in really good shape.
Good.
Really good shape. So thank you.
Good job. Chuck? Good job. Chuck?
Um just a, a little reminder, I know it's only about weeks notice, but we have our, well, soon after the board meeting, we do have our eleven A M. Uh Zoom meeting for our uh fiscal year twenty twenty-four year-end workshop. Where we'll go over um per orders, encumbrances, counts payable, receivables, write-offs, inventory, those kind of items. Just make sure everything, all the parts are all set, as far as far as Euro six, three, twenty-four numbers. Again, the great news is um in terms of encumbrances, there's no having to, the partners finalize those encumbrances now. Again, we're gonna have the benefit of the full hindsight twenty twenty, as far as encumbering exactly what you can and what was needed. Because of, again, whether it's trains, it didn't happen to, to the timing, personnel. Um conferences you couldn't attend, again, same reason sometimes, um or maybe things that you ordered but didn't pay for yet that changed. You know, aren't coming in, so, you know, July, or things you thought wouldn't come until July, but they came in now, so they're an expense now. So this, it's very good that we got that one resolution changed to the the delegation, so and on that topic of the delegation. Just a reminder that uh next Wednesday evening at six o'clock in Hilton, June nineteenth. Is the delegation meeting to vote on the twenty twenty-five budget? Um, let's see, um and then the day after, I, it's my traditional, I guess you could say, annual vacation. Going down to the In-N-Out in Florida, so I'll be on the road by five o'clock in the morning the next day, so.
Go to Florida this time of year.
Any drive?
It's a road trip, the five-year-old is on the spectrum and he's, yeah, he's not, he doesn't wanna play.
That's okay.
He'd be making friends with all the passengers, so we might not wanna be friends with him, so. Um, let's see, we're dealing with, uh, we were one of the, I think I mentioned this on a prior meeting, but we are considering to deal with. The the fact that the New Hampshire retirement system gets audited annually by an independent auditor, and we happen to be one of the nurse employers that were selected. And so, yeah, so they've asked for information on, oh my word, it's gotta be somewhere around like seventy people or so.
Wow.
Yeah, three different classifications, people already here, new hires, people retired or left, otherwise left. Um, so they, they asked for a lot of information, so we got quite a bit of it over for their, they only had given us a one-week deadline to give stuff. I did kinda tell them we, you know, we would give them what we could by that time, but one week is kinda.
Yeah, that's tight.
And that request was made, the work for payroll would have been, have you done during a payroll week? But they still got, just I think all, all the requests, we're trying to do, we saw the employee uh record request. Um, the counties did have a um a little bit of a Zoom meeting. Um, at the beginning of the legislative committee meeting for A J C last Friday. Um, so they kinda straightened out exactly what D T H S is looking for, for requirements, information requirements for regards to the opioid abatement.
Yeah.
Transfund grant, um so I think the individuals, the D T H S realized that, yeah, there's been some little. Delays and responses and not consistency of requirements, so hopefully they'll get hammered out.
And did we get our May payments?
Yes, so also happened was that separately, not a grant, but um, uh. It may or may not know that the twenty, the ten counties and thirteen municipalities in New Hampshire separately, we get our own separate fifteen percent allocation. From any federal settlement that ends up going to the state, and all opioid settlements go through the state. So um so those twenty-three entities get fifteen percent. We, Rockland County, generally speaking, gets about seventeen percent of that fifteen, because it's kinda based upon population. So what happened was that items have been disposed as being April dispersments, um.
Yeah.
Treasury, the New Hampshire Treasury did finally disperse, and so be sure received it, I have to check in with Lane, but I think yesterday it should come through.
Great.
Uh, because I got the email on the eleventh of June with the ten effective date, but the effective date really is two business days after that. The date on the electronic advice, so eight hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, just.
Great.
Just because, you know, Chuck had reached out to me since I said in the committee of, when they announced these things have been dispersed, and we don't have the monies. We need to find out where it is at, so I asked the turn, uh, just to turn General Petty. That group had dispersed it, but it goes to treasury whenever they decide to release it, so there is, even if they make some announcements, things have been dispersed, which sounds. There is some timing delays, even though we didn't really get the money.
Very good.
Money management.
And I'll just add the usual, we're very busy.
We're gonna make a T-shirt that says that. Alright, I'm gonna go to Jason Smith. Morning, Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners, um in the year board packet that I provided, you had the uh long-term care employee newsletter for June. With a lot of detailed information on happenings within the nursing home and assisted living community. Mentioned last week, we had F S A compliance group uh conduct an audit, um the audit went very well on our Medicare Part A billing. There's only one minor recommendation that's been addressed, everything is going very well with um our billing practices for Medicare and Medicaid. Um, Jessica Window, uh just recently graduated from the Leadership Seacoast Program, it's a great networking event. Um so we're happy to have her um graduate from that and um make some great connections out in the community. Um on Tuesday, June eleventh, uh we conducted our annual Seabrook Nuclear Power Plant Emergency Preparedness Meeting. Um Elaine, uh who is here with me, um is updating our emergency manual to reflect all the changes with the new plan that was established. So um thank you, Elaine, for doing that, um in addition, um Commissioner Coil, thank you for uh taking the time out of your busy day. To uh see our residents at Resident Council, just to learn and understand what the Commissioners actually do. Um I think that our staff have repeated twice now, so they're starting to get a little bored about what we do internally. Uh so I'm sure they'll be asking for Jason Henry, um and probably the High Sheriff at some point to come to talk to them. Um they're not interested in finance, though, sorry, Chuck. Having Jude come and talk as well, so it it was kinda funny, um but thank you again, have a good day, everyone.
And thank you, Jason, alright, uh I'm gonna go to Jude Gates.
Good morning, um is well in facilities, we're also busy, um. I do have the electricity recommendation, whenever you wanna take it off the table. And. It's up to you.
Uh yeah, let, Commissioner Coil will start, well.
Well, we need the.
We need the, the name.
You wanna, Jude, can you just, would it be easier for you to text or email and all plug in?
It's in your email.
They, of course, like every time, you're like, I'm like, okay, they was ahead of me once again.
Other than that, I'm, I'm working on an issue right now with Palmer Gas and Oil, I don't have all the answers yet, I briefly spoke with Chuck a couple of days ago. Um, they recently lost our contract for L P gas, although they got the contract for oil, which I think is probably. At least as profitable, but they're claiming ownership of all of our L P gas tanks, and we've had them here for about five years. This last go-around, no one on staff has any recollection of them changing tanks. It's my opinion that they are not their tanks, they claim that the onus is on us, so I'm still trying to figure out.
I may be able to shed a little bit of light on it, I don't know the exact details, but when you deal with propane. The tanks, un- unless you bought them, are owned by the gas company, now when you change the gas company.
Mm-hmm.
The, 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 the old gas company and the new gas company come to an agreement to, to, to buy from each other. So it could be where they do own them, um unless we own.
Yeah, I haven't been able to make that determination, Eastern Propane had been the vendor here for years and years, as I understand it. If they owned the tank and they came up to an agreement with Palmer Gas and Oil, they did it between themselves. And we were not a part of it, well now Palmer Gas and Oil wants money, they want, you know, seventy-one hundred dollars a tank.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with it, that would have nothing to do with it.
I think Havers has relocated to buy them, because, you know what I mean? So I can't figure out if we're getting stuck in the middle of a discussion with them, or if I'm dealing with it, I guess is how, I just wanted to let you know.
Alright, sounds like something we may have to negotiate, I guess.
Probably, or very likely, but in any case, that's, that's where we are with that. Other than that, um revision mobilized this week, they've got, um their dumpsters are down there, the, the retention ponds are completed. They've got, uh, the roadwork is being done, they've got a landing area for their equipment, um. They're very busy, things are going really well with the building. We had a second site visit yesterday in the delegation building for the, the wall removal, we had three vendors show up. We gave them a little bit longer of a time to put together a quote, so I'm very hopeful that, one of the three is the person who said they just didn't have enough time. On the last go-around, so I'm very hopeful that they, they've had plenty of time to sharpen their pencil and that we will get a quote for that. We had a walkthrough in the um administration building for some upcoming work being done, a, a good paint out of the building. Wall repairs, things like that, Allison and her staff are helping us to choose um just a couple of little vanities for their bathrooms. Little upgrades that we'll be putting in over the next several weeks, so that's underway, and um we'll be very excited to get the flooring started in the nursing home.
Um so I, uh going back to the award, I move to award the proposal for supplier of electricity to Constellation for a fixed cost of. Point zero nine five eight per kilowatt hours for the period of, and is it July first, twenty twenty-four, Sunday?
It's the, it's a meter reading after June, they do it on the meter reading date.
For a meter reading um after uh June twenty twenty-four. Through September twenty twenty-five, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and I T.
Second motion's been made and seconded, um is it, you want, any discussion on this, or are we ready to vote?
I, I would like to point out that it's about a, a, about a twenty-five percent decrease from our last contract of a couple of years ago. Um so, it's pretty good. Yeah, yeah, it's really good news. I, I'm gonna ask Chuck to have a quick look, look it over for me before I ask for um the Commissioner to sign, just to make sure that.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
I'm voting Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Subject to, subject to final review.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, so I'm gonna go to Captain Stacy. Hi, Captain.
Good morning, um, I mean, business as usual over here, we had a couple of, obviously, big stamps this week. Um, both on the Seacoast, um I wondered if anybody has like a two drawer old file cabinet somewhere? That nobody's using, because I could use it in my copy department.
Dude said.
Putting it out there, if anybody's, but he's got anything, I.
We have tons, Kathy.
Dude, dude raised your hand, so.
Yeah, we, we have a bunch, we collect, people send them to us when they don't need them anymore, so we always have a few in storage.
Sweet, sweet, that's wonderful, you can always come over, give me a call, Jude, let me know.
Okay.
Um, the other thing I wanted to tell you is that we've been out of hot water at this building since, for over a week.
Since when?
A week.
A week.
No.
Over a week.
Well, Kathy, we got one more year to go before you get moved in.
It's crazy, I just, you know, I just wanted to let you know, I mean, obviously, it's, you know, it's, it's tiresome.
Are they working on it? Did you hear back from them?
Oh, it's a part, it'll come when it comes.
Alright.
So, that's all I have to report, thank you.
Thank you, uh I'm gonna go to the sheriff.
Good morning, um. We are doing a lot of background checks, we're doing three on applications for bailups, which is great. Because we have shorter bailups, which uh continue the backgrounds on those three dispatches, which once they get their background checks done. Will be, will be fully staffed, not over. Uh, we had a applicant apply for a part-time deputy's position. And we, we are doing a background check on a deputy's position, so we're doing a lot of background checks. Trying to get these people to come to work for us, but it's, it's moving along very well, um things are good, that's about it, have a great day.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to, today, I think I got everybody, I'm gonna go to Lisa.
I have nothing to.
Nothing, okay, alright, so I think we wrapped up the department heads.
No.
Oh, yeah, I think. You wanna give a report for the counties or anybody, I know you're here for something else.
Yeah, I can tell you, it's been pretty steady last month, a lot of trials, County Attorney Conway is, um, right now in a. She's been in it since Monday, leaving A F S A trial, uh which is why she couldn't be here, but um, yeah, just about the same as usual. Um, the court's still scheduling trials every uh, for, four weeks a month, for the most part, so that's really what most of.
The case load worked, lighting up a little bit, or is it still staying pretty busy?
Um, still pretty busy, I mean, we're trying to get a sense of how going away from felonies versus changing that, but it's still. Um, we're still kinda getting just the bound over and having, they, they kinda trickle in, because we'll get out and over, it takes a while to get to separate, aside, so. It's, it's still pretty early to.
Alright, very good, um appreciate you being here, and you're gonna, you're gonna talk to us in non-public briefly. Um, I think that's, we've got everybody correct, so let's do the. Uh, we have a Glendale dining food pricing discussion, and I know somebody in Glendale is here.
We also have the walk-in first for the line item transfer to us, and then we also have a couple other exception requests. So, um why don't we go through our business first, and then we'll jump to Glendale?
Yeah, do the walk-in line item.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, uh dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Transferring from county training to uh office expense advertising, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on?
Just that this is an effort to approve for the, the nursing home administrator.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, we've got a couple.
Yeah.
Things that we didn't.
Yes. Um, I move to approve an exception request for uh personnel policy, some point for wage increase. To give a uh bi-weekly stipend of uh, uh a thousand dollars to M M S. For additional duties as recommended by um, we, uh Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second motion's been made, seconded, any discussion?
Well, I haven't seen this, so I'm just trying to. Oh, this is what we discussed last week.
I've, uh, I'm going to be making a few of these, in similar vein.
So, are you all set?
So. Did it, did it get, did it get seconded?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, I move to approve an exception request to P P P seven dash four wage increases to uh award a weekly. Approve a weekly, bi-weekly stipend of a thousand dollars to K M, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Uh, there are none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Well, yes.
And I move to approve a, 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 um, exception request to personnel policy, some dash four wage increases. For uh, uh, by, to approve a bi-weekly stipend to the amount of three hundred dollars to E W. Um, as recommended by the, um, and this, I don't, beginning, and with all these to mend all of them. A beginning date of June ninth, twenty twenty-four, um, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion's been made, is I gonna, may I see that last one?
Right.
The minute point low, yeah.
That one.
Yes, please.
Um, and then that motion for H M.
Oh, okay.
Recommended by the Human Resources Managing.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, sure, so I have two amendments to uh motions, with respect to K M's. Uh, I, it's as recommended by the H R manager, and with respect to all three, just that the start date is beginning June ninth, twenty twenty-four. I didn't put that on my.
And is there an end date?
We don't know.
Didn't we make an end date of three months?
We're working with three months, um, that's our goal, that's our goal, but I didn't wanna put anything hard fast. Because um, the interim license is for six months, I don't think it's gonna go anywhere near that, but we're, we've gotta see if we have the cool candidates to go for. We can evaluate.
So we'll reevaluate when somebody's hired, and, and just.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And, and just for clarification, these stipends are specifically for coverage of our um. Our nursing home administrator, Jason Smith, is leaving, and um, we have people that are gonna do significant extra duties to cover. Far and well, in the interim while we're searching for somebody, and that's why we're giving this extra salary, in case anyone out in this land is interested.
It's good.
So on the amended motion. So on the amended motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes, and now we're on the, I.
The last motion I moved, I made the motion. I don't think we've seconded that front.
Second.
Yeah.
So on the last motion, on the, uh, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
I vote yes. So we're all set then, so now.
So now we're up to Glendale.
Yeah, and I know someone from Glendale's here, um. Yeah, I think it's the owner. Yeah, do you wanna see? I started poking around. We're gonna just take a minute break here, folks. What do we find, um?
Do you think it would, uh?
Did you see him? I'll hear you.
I think the information can be in public and then thereafter, I feel that we should. We might wanna talk in, on public, just to render our proposed action ineffective.
On this subject?
Yes.
Come again?
Yeah, we can do a pause while, or if I, we're gonna take a two-minute break, just for anybody. Good morning, everybody.
Morning. Okay, we're, we're back in, uh, we're back in the meeting, and, um, and we've invited. Couple representatives from Glendale and Allison introduced themselves.
I'm Jim Hacker from Glendale.
David Martin, district manager.
Okay, very good, and welcome. Um, so one of the things that, um, just to update people, um. We actually put in for a new dishwasher, I don't know, this is probably like six months ago now. Um, and that was quite a project, there was a lot of unexpected things happening there, um. And which caused some of the paper wood side of things to really kind of escalate in the budget. Um, and so. One of the things that we wanted to look at is the.
Thank you.
The discussion came up of, um, when the last time any food increased costs have taken place. I mean, I know that I've been here for, and Commissioner Coyle's been here for three, over three years, we've. No one ever moved any prices. We all know what's happened with inflation, prices increased.
And just to clarify, because when you talk about food prices, what we're specifically talking about is the rate we charge at the water tower. Not that, so, but I, just for everybody. When we're talking about rates, we're saying, what are we charging at the cafe for?
And I was gonna, I was gonna get, but thank you for clarifying. Um, and so, I, I'll open it up to any of the commissioners that wanna also chime in as far as any of the discussions that we had about maybe looking at. Trying to recover some, some things.
Okay, just so that, what clarification of what we're doing here. There's an old menu. That we have been going by that with, everybody is probably recognized, including me, how come this is so cheap? And it was, the menu numbers were established long ago, uh, and just never changed. Uh, what's come to light in my mind, that it's very bothersome. Uh, is that we are subsidizing this operation of the cafe. Uh, to the tunes of four hundred.
Half a million dollars.
Yeah, a half a million dollars a year. Um, and that's why we're having this discussion, and that's. Well, if we wanna subsidize a half a million dollars, we should know that, that that's what we're doing, and, uh, we need to. Real this in.
Correct, and especially with the, I, what happened is when all of this, when we were looking at budgets and to Commissioner Chair Charles, first point. When we were looking at increased cost with dining, we were trying to assess where are all these costs and what are the expenses? And that's where it came to light, that we are, um, that half a million to Commissioner Wadu's point, that. We are half a million dollars in the red, using, with the water tower cafe. So, uh, what we decided to do is get some data, extract some data about what would some changes or increase in food costs. Need and how we want to, if any way. Um, pass on those costs, and specifically, what is the cost increase? And are we going to have different cost increase for an employee versus a member of the public? And would we do different rates or, so, right now, this purpose of this meeting is to look at and do some assessment and, you know, put it out to the public. About what are we looking at for cost now, and what would be, for instance, like budget neutral? So what is an actual one-for-one cost? And, uh, we've been provided with a spreadsheet with various, or top-selling items for March, and what the cost is to. Um, everybody at the water ca- cafe now, and what that, you know, if we made increases, what those numbers would look like.
To give you a little context, the cafe opened in twenty eighteen. And the prices were, were presented and they were. Pretty, pretty reasonable at the time, cup of coffee was ninety-five cents. That's all pre-discount. So the prices are, are kind of, are remarkably low. And haven't been touched for six years.
Six years. And, Jim, could you touch on, when you say pre-discount, can you explain that for everybody? And then with respect to the spreadsheet we have, um, where it says average price? Does that incorporate the discount?
No.
Or that's just the price pre-discount?
Pre-discount. So, or in twenty eighteen, a cup of coffee was ninety-five cents, the discount. Then we had, we, we presented three choices, a twenty, twenty-five, and thirty percent discount, followed by commissioner selecting a twenty-five percent discount. So everything on the manual is discounted by twenty-five percent. A cup of coffee was twenty-five cents, plus, plus twenty-five percent.
So this was approved.
In six years.
Six years.
Yes, and we, we, we presented two. Potential price adjustments over the years, and, um, the insiduous made not to, not to raise the prices.
Okay. So I think the county was very generous, um. You know, in not touching any of those prices for those six years. I mean, inflation over that same six years, it was pretty close to twenty percent. Uh, but now we're at a point where we gotta kind of live with things, uh, and see where we're at.
And, and an inflection point of, right now, we have a very high agency. Coming into the county, um, and the cost of what we know is the cost of using an agency individual is significantly higher. And so one thing we discussed is bifurcating. Um, pricing for employees versus out, people outside the community. So the public or vendors or, um, or particularly, you know, agency individuals, because. Um, some of the discount, we want to, or to the extent that we want to help with the subsidies, that is. Intended for our, it's a perk or a benefit of our, for employment here.
Yeah, and I'm asking a question, uh, how difficult would it be to do a, a two-tiered system? I should say multi-tiered system in pricing, is it, is it software change?
It's already being implemented right now, and based on, um, the IDs.
This way or this way.
The vertical or horizontal badges differentiates to the people at the checkout.
Very good.
So do we have a presentation? On this topic that you want to bring up to us?
Well, we, we, Dave has, has prepared, um, the top page with the yellow, just give you. What the current price is in the white column, and then what the price would look like with the various pricing reason across the top. The last, um, column, I call the nuclear approach is a budget neutral approach, but it requires prices that go up almost three hundred percent. Um, now remember, you're, it's not just the food, you've got, you've got food, paper, labor, and any operating costs associated with the cafe that all come, come together and they create the. Kind of, kind of make this deficit. Again, in twenty eighteen, when we opened the cafe, we opened with deficit, by design. So this has just gotten bigger and bigger over the years. It was a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety grand when we first started. By design, almost a hundred thousand, so it's doubled plus some in six years.
And, go ahead.
I was gonna say, it's Commissioner Coyle's point of, back in twenty eighteen, we probably had a lot more employees than we did traveling nurses, I would think.
Well, I, I'm not sure what the, the head count is, but I know that the, the concept was to present them with a, um, really a great value.
Yes.
Um. But, he's operating hours, and right now, I mean, most of the, you know, people that use the cafeteria on a regular basis, sometimes they're in there for three meals a day.
Right.
So it is, it is a value to me, but it was considered a benefit.
Yeah, and we heard testimony from Assistant Living, uh, Director. That, um, some of her staff will definitely have breakfast and lunch before they go home, because, um. It's, it's more affordable than.
Yeah.
I mean, we've all, everybody's seen these food price increases over the last years since.
It's forty percent.
Yeah, it's crazy. So I think we, and I believe we had a discussion as to. How we wanted to handle traveling nurses and, uh, and employees, and I think we had that vote.
Yeah, that, that's not, that was temporary. We need to evaluate this whole. Situation and then determine if we're gonna do discounts.
Um, do we have a sense of? The number of people, and maybe we haven't extracted this data, but the number of. Staff members utilizing the cafe compared to outside, non-staff, we'll just, I mean, non-employees versus employees.
I mean, from just an observation perspective, I don't think, when we, we have a pretty good, uh, software package that tracks. Transactions and tracks how many things, and at every item they'd be selling, how many, but it doesn't track. Really, really come from. Observation, I would say about ninety percent of our, uh, sales come from inside the building. Between corrections department, sheriffs, oh, corrections doesn't come very much, but sheriffs and staff.
And what?
And staff.
And staff. Well, nursing, but the, I guess my question is a little broken out too. Within, because we have, so I agree nursing would be a heavy user as well as, you know, obviously sheriffs, I mean, some of the other. Employees, but specifically within nursing, we have such a high agency usage. Um, are we finding, I guess I'd like, I'm just trying to figure out of that nursing side. What number we're having for, you know, what's, what number we're having of agency utilizing it?
We don't know that.
But what, since we've started to.
But I can, I can tell you this one thing, we do, did determine, was it a couple thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars a month.
So at a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars a month, it's going back into sales from eliminating the discount to the agency staff.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's.
Non-truth.
That's matter.
But.
In a month?
Can we, since we are splitting out right now, we're splitting out, um. Staff versus, uh, outside, or I should say, agency or employees versus non-employees. Um, can we, we should be able to, because of pricing, be able to, to extract like, number of users, right?
Drops down the terms. Yeah, I don't, I, I can check with Steve Wright, who knows that system much better than I do, but I'm not sure we got the ability to identify where the. Things the folks work for the county or coming from outside. Um. I, I'll, I'll ask the question.
So I have questions.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Unless they have.
You're gonna respond to something?
Oh.
If that's.
No, I was gonna say, reverse engineer it with each sale, if you're actually, you know, you're buying someone who's an employee, can you reverse engineer it to get who's not?
But we can, we can figure out, because we just have this, we can figure out how many employees are utilizing the discount, which would be.
Yes.
I think we can do that.
That would be valuable data.
I think, I think the system will tell you how much discounts you're using, and then you can. What you can do is you can back into with an average check and, and divide out and see how many people that looks like.
Precisely.
Yeah.
Good.
There's another way.
Okay, so my first question is, how does, does the operation at the Water Tower Ca- Cafe? How is it related to the services that you're providing for meals for, uh, residents? Is it related, or is it very separate?
Totally separate.
Totally separate.
And it's budgeted separately.
Okay, alright.
And this, we have three, what we call GL codes in the building. We have a GL code for nursing and the GL. The general ledger code internally with our company. So, one, one oh six is nursing home and jail, and one oh seven is the water tower, and now we have one twenty-five, which is a six eleven.
Okay, so, uh, do we have separate contracts for, for this service?
No, they're all, it's all rolled into one.
It's all rolled in, okay.
Historically, we, on our budget, there's a separate budget line for the cafe. I think there's.
There is.
Okay, so. I would, I would like to request that, um, we see all of the expenses from the Water Tower Cafe. Um. Broken out by labor, paper, um. I, I wanna understand what we're paying people to work in there, and, um, what our costs are, because. What concerns me, uh, is that the. It would appear to be inefficient from the standpoint of, and I'll just give you, um, a medium coffee. To serve a cup of medium coffee. Without discounting and having us break even is four dollars and seventy-eight cents. At least according to this. Um, chart that I have here. An entree would be twenty-three dollars. Uh, now, I, I know these numbers are kind of averages and some calculations have been put in here, but this seems. To me, at first glance, and not being in the restaurant business. This neutral budget. Seems.
It's organic.
It, 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 much higher than it ought to be.
It, it's not realistic. It was just, it was just sort of a, an example of what it would look like if you went that direction.
Okay, so I guess I, rather than an example, what I would be looking for is what the prices really need to be on the items that you sell. In order for us to not lose money.
It, it, it's not that simple. I mean, you've got two components that come into play. A, first of all, you remember, you have a closed loop here. You only have a certain amount of people that are gonna use the cafe. On any given day, and some of, you're not gonna get, you get very few from the outside. It's not really open to the public, although theoretically it could be, but I'm not sure that's, that's the best idea. So you don't get a lot of people from the outside. Everything's coming from inside the building, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a closed environment. So your sales are only gonna go up a little bit by volume depending on the day. The, the, um. The nuclear approach or the, the, the budget neutral approach is not a realistic approach to solving the problem. It'll solve it, but you won't have the sales. So you're gonna, you're gonna raise the price to a point where you don't have anybody show up.
Well, I'm, I guess I'm suggesting, and the reason I wanna see all the expenses, is that I'm in disbelief that we really have to charge this much to not lose money.
Well, it's, again, because you've got a limited amount of sales, because you're only, you're only selling to residents inside the building, and. You've got the labor and the paper and the roof, all of which run up. Actually, you know, a ton since this thing was first introduced in eight, in twenty eighteen.
Okay, I understand that, and that may be perfectly accurate. Uh, it's just that I wanna see the, uh, the math. How, how we're doing this, uh, because we, we need to make some good decisions on what the prices ought to be. You know, I think we wanna have something that's efficient in there, but if I can go to a sub shop and get prices that are a lot lower than this. Um, I, okay, and a- again, there may be some very legitimate reasons why the, the costs are extraordinary. I'd like to investigate why that is and how, and see if we can come up with some suggestions. By, of limiting the menu, uh, limiting the hours, uh. But I, I, I don't know what the suggestions should be, but something needs to change. In order for us to get to a good place, uh, spending five hundred thousand dollars of county money to, uh, o- offer. Next to free food is, is not sustainable, especially given our budget year. Um, so some, something needs to change, and I think we need complete financials to try to. Dig down into what we, how we can move forward in an efficient manner.
Yeah, there's, we, 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 we do that every month, so we can drill down on any number that you, we can give you. From now, we're actually, we're almost at the end of the year, we give it to a man. Of, of each of the expense categories to, to make up the cost of the water tower.
Tim, can I have?
And then you can drill that, hold on a second, get into payroll, and I mean, we can do all that as well. That won't show on the bill.
I wanna see what the bill, what the payroll is and all that.
It's all pretty, very trans, very, it's very transparent.
I just need a quick question before I forget. So, I, what I wanna do is sort of look at the, the overall big picture. And I need to ask Chuck this question. When we brought Glendale on, before Glendale came on, we actually had employees. Right? And so when we brought Glendale on, I would think that there was probably a savings to the county. And as Jim mentioned earlier, when it first began. We were running, would you say, a hundred and eighty thousand, roughly? Um, the cost of, of the county picking up that cost.
Oh, I don't even, I mean, prior to the cafe opening, it was, uh, what was it open? It was a single item menu, and it was pretty much free.
My thought was, yeah, I think my point, my point. Yeah, I think my point, my point being is, is when we had, when those employees broke ours, meaning the counties, and we ran the whole program. There was a reason why we, we jobbed it out to a vendor, and that was, that was you. I would assume that there was a savings, a significant savings, bringing them on.
No, the reason we outsourced it was because we had fourteen open positions between fourteen and seventeen positions that we could not fill. And it had been getting worse each year.
Okay.
And we're not able to get those employees.
But your, but your point, when, when the, when the employee transitioned onto our payroll, the county saved. Somewhere around a million bucks in, in, in taxes and print.
Okay.
All right, was that a million bucks?
I'd like to re, reuse the counts.
Yeah, I think, and, and that's the number.
They were a forecast, they were a forecast that would be. That's important for me to know because I, I, I don't want. The general public thinking that, you know, we just opened this up, we're gonna lose money all the time. There was a savings, there was a savings produced.
The two employees when they went over.
Alright, so, what's your point?
Just the point, I think the issue is, and to Commissioner Green's point, it's like, if we can, if it can be net neutral. Four chicken tenders is sixteen twenty-four, we could go to. Like, you could go to a private, I mean, lots of places, bring food in. And it would be more cost effective for the county, you know, based on the rate. So I think that concern is. As I see it, there is a concern about sort of what budget neutral looks like and why we're there, which is. A sec, you know, one issue we'll have to, we'll discuss in more detail.
Allison, do you have something?
I just was asking, these, these incorporate those labor costs, about what, for how those are studied, I just wanted to.
It's really just, it's, it really was just an illustration. It wasn't, it isn't a, isn't it actually a, a real approach to, to solving this?
No, we know that, but when you, when you look at budget neutral, that doesn't include any labor costs?
Well, that's the other variable. If you did a combination of price increases and labor reduction, meaning going to a grab and go. Um, versus a full-service cafeteria, certain times a day or over the weekend or whatever, whatever happens. You can get to budget neutral without raising the prices so high. It's, it's, it's an option on here, it's um, four V.
But when you, when you gave us this chart with the yellow and you show us, I guess maybe, and I'm sorry for misunderstanding. When you say an entree special is twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents to be budget neutral. What does that number include?
That's just food. That's taking the current food price and raising it to hundred and eighty-two percent.
So that doesn't include paper or labor?
That's just an illustration of what the food would run.
I'm not happy with this chart. I don't think that it's accurate enough to make a good decision. I think that there's a lot of assumptions that have been made. Uh, and I, I think we need to drill down on all of the financials of the entire operation. Because we're running a little restaurant here and we have administration, we have labor, we have food costs. And we, we need to look at that whole thing, you know, I mean, how much does it cost us to keep this thing open, uh, if we don't sell anything? You know, what, what, what are those costs, you know, our, our employment that we've, that we've committed to? And, and then. You know, what percentage of the sales of that administration has to go towards the uh, the cost of the food? And then we need to look at it, and maybe we need to reduce labor or may, maybe reduce options, but I. I agree, I can't, I can't justify.
It's gonna be a combination.
These numbers.
It, it's gonna be a combination of labor and pricing.
Okay, fair enough. I just, I just wanna drill down and figure out what the, what the right numbers ought to be.
It, it's gonna be a combination of, of changing the service model at some point to, to kind of not have it open as. As much as full service and also change the pricing. You don't change prices for eight, for six years, you've got a problem anyway.
Well, right.
Right.
But my question is, why is it like, why does it cost us to be neutral sixteen twenty-four for two, four chicken tenders? And I just, this anecdotal, but you can go to, you know, many a restaurant and get four chicken tenders for. You know, significantly less.
They're probably serving a hundred times more people.
So it's just a volume.
It's a bias, yeah. I mean, you're only serving, out of the six hundred people that are in this building, I mean, overnight doesn't do anything. There's a very low participation, that's another, that's a hundred or fifty or a hundred people, right? So we got a base of five hundred, of which we're probably getting sixty percent of.
Do you know how many customers per day on average?
We can give you transactions per day.
Yeah, that would be good. That'd be good in that.
How many people come through.
Right.
Transaction will be a cup of coffee or.
Sure, but that's still, at least we know how many employees are utilizing over the course.
We have it. And weekends, there's no business.
Are you open?
Oh, yeah.
And there's no business?
No, it's, it's almost pretty much dead.
Alright, I, we, we need to take a good hard look at.
Meals on the weekends.
Say that again?
Some of the other counties, they're only open Mondays and Fridays and their cast, they shut down on the weekend. They provide. Um, an overnight meal to the, uh, they like leave an overnight meal for the eleven, the seven crew, but that's about it.
Yeah.
So there are, it, it, that's how a lot of them work.
The thing with Scranton County is you have a micro mark. So we could supplement and supply the micro mark, which is a self-service eos with grab and go items. Still offering your employees that are working in the building. Options for food. But you're closed again, there is an option.
Right.
You're providing something, so somebody does not have to go out property.
Right, right.
Yeah, the difficulty is that there's no place close by to run out and get a sandwich. I mean, it's a half an hour. By the time you, you know, come back and forth and you've blown your whole lunch hour.
So when we say closed, we could say, let's, you know, you can limit the hours of operation, but provide an option through the micro mark.
Alright.
So nice. So the sales really represent a Monday through Friday kind of situation. Weekends are really, really tight, not really much, much, much going on. I mean, we only have a cook and a cashier on weekends.
You have a cook and a cashier on when?
Weekends.
On the weekends?
Yeah.
And you need more than that. How many?
No, no.
How much do you have during the week?
We have two cooks and a cashier.
Only three people?
Mm-hmm. And then, and it, it will open till one o'clock. And after that, it's for Adam, go.
Two cooks, cashier, salad bar, and two.
Yeah, so there's some back in the house stuff going on too. We have a cook and back that does salad bar and a lot of things.
So when you change it, you look at changing the program, you could say, let's close the salad bar like we did in COVID. And eliminate that one service person.
So we have three cooks, essentially, a prep cook and two.
You got a cook that does a salad bar, right? And you've got a, a manager that comes in in the morning that does breakfast, so he's, he's by himself until. Ten or eleven o'clock, and then you have the second person comes up, but there is a ton of staff out there.
Okay, so rather than pepper you with detailed questions on this, I, I, I'll wait for the report and then.
We give you an average staffing pattern, where you have your wages, hours worked, all that good stuff.
True.
I, I, I think we need to look at all that.
Very good. Anything, anything else?
Thank you.
I think that was valuable information for us to begin with.
It is. I think that we need to uh, continue to drill down and figure out how to make this efficient and then decide whether or not. And how much we, we might discount.
Yeah.
Um, it, it just, I think. Can you also give us a proposal of how we would get the prices down to market price? Um. Like, when I say market price, what I'd expect to pay at a local small mom and pop restaurant?
If you flip this thing through really quickly and go to often four B.
Yeah.
Get back to the white pages. Um. Four V, essentially, if you do a hundred and twenty-five percent price increase, which sounds like a lot, but on, it really isn't that bad. And some of the items I leave alone, like the six dollar entree, I would, that's, I just leave that one B, but the other stuff can go up. And make some minor staff reduction, you can get to a zero assumption. And that doesn't require you to go.
At the one twenty-five number?
Yeah, yeah, it, it works, but it's gonna require some changes in the service hours. It's gonna be require some more grab and go at all times, and may, maybe a reduction in the certain salad bar, but you can get there. Without blowing the place up.
Now your chicken tenders are under ten bucks. I mean, that's, that's getting a little, that's getting a little closer to what seems like a normal price.
And you can go proportion, that's four, three, everybody's changing their, their back size.
Yeah, I mean, right now, you're, you're walking to McDonald's for lunch, it's fourteen dollars.
Exactly.
Simple example is a twenty ounce Diet Pepsi. You know, the, the current price is dollar thirty. You go in a C store, you're paying two twenty-five to two eighty, easy. Once there's a deal going on, maybe. But that's before the discount, so you pay ninety-five cents with a twenty-five percent discount. That's barely a buck cost.
Yeah.
So some of the things that, that, because they haven't gone up in six years. Sometimes the cost exceeds.
If we were to go back in time and do, do, would have been the best way to handle it, but we didn't do that.
But in the three-year period with COVID. Twenty to forty percent cost on just a bit, you know, bacon.
Yeah.
Yeah, payroll went up, they can hire anybody.
Yeah. Yeah, I get it.
There's a lot of opportunity.
It's nobody's fault, we're just, we're just at a place now where.
If we did go to grab and go, we could take the employees that we would not need and move them back into the main kitchen, we wouldn't lose them.
Alright.
You wouldn't want.
If we went to more grab and go, which would, which would reduce the labor, we would take employees that are affected by that and. Push them back into the nursing home payroll, so we'd have, we'd, we'd, we'd still keep them, we'd, we'd, we'd let anybody off.
You're just gonna reassign.
We just reassign them.
Staff, we, we made, they're not, they're not losing their job, they're just gonna, they're gonna move to a different uh, cost set.
How, how much staff do you have doing the nursing home? And Corrections Department?
Forty, only a team here, I think, forty-two, I think.
That are in-house here?
Yeah.
Working to prepare to move food and.
Seven days a week.
And that concludes meals on wheels too, right?
No.
Oh, that's separate.
Meals on wheels have nothing to do with the nursing home.
Okay.
That's a separate crew, separate everything.
Okay, so there's no crossing with the, with the staff?
The only thing we used to cross over was that the only real drivers used to help wash dishes when they got off their shift. And then punch in on the nursing upside, punch out on the meal.
I think we, I think we've asked for some, some information to help us make that decision, so we appreciate you coming in and. And giving us these options and some things to think of.
Let me send you uh, over whatever, whatever, whatever I think you. Could look at, and let me know if you need more, I can always send it over.
You can send that to the labor.
Yeah, I got some of your data.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So I was part of the commissioners that actually entered the contract in with Glendale and. I remember way back, we could not staff that, and I can remember my daughter Molly was in LNA, she worked down there. Because they were so short-staffed, but I remember ten inmates also. Being in there, I remember Patty, who was your director, serving corn on the cob, so we could not staff it. And you put in here for retirement, and then you have the benefits that you folks supplied to rotten pound. We were way over the top, so we saved hundreds of thousands of dollars when we entered the contract with them, I think it was a five-year contract. But the biggest thing is the nurses and Jason Strickland ancestors, I don't think you want them and I don't think they can leave for lunch, am I right?
Correctly pay them.
Yeah, they're paid for lunch. Down to the lobster place down on the prize and get a lobster Quebec, they have to stay in the nursing.
Correct.
Right.
Cause everybody has lobster.
But, but you know, the biggest thing is we could not staff it, and it was very dangerous before Jason Henry came here. We had ten and twelve inmates.
This is.
Working in that kitchen.
This is the information that, that I brought up, cause we, we didn't know, President, us.
We had inmates did all the dishes.
I wanna say, Jim, that we saved hundreds of, I don't know the number now, cause. Yesterday was, but um, we saved hundreds of thousands of dollars by end of the contract, and we could not fill the positions. We just could not do it with an.
We, we filled seventeen positions.
Yeah.
Never mind.
I just have one more question before we go, Jim, because I, I didn't get a chance to talk to you this morning. You mentioned that you've been doing this for quite a long time and that you also work with other counties.
I've had a relationship with every county in the state except for. I never, I've never been involved with Stratford County Nursing Home. I do Stratford County Meals on Wheels.
Yeah, but you said to me something that was interesting, that in the county, um, they're, they're not in the blacks. They, they generally all run a little.
Oh, they all lose money. Anything, any, any, any employee dining program is, is a cost.
So we're not unique, it's not unique here.
Well, the only thing that you're unique is you're the only uh, county with a fully functioning retail cafeteria.
Okay.
The rest of them are usually, again, a single entree meal that comes off the tray line. Or as, as a leftover, or it's pretty haphazard. Um. And it's a couple of bucks.
Yeah, so I, I sort of equate it to. Uh, and I don't know if this is still the case, but sometimes people will go to the hospitals to get a meal because they were reasonably priced, a little bit less. But I would think it was the same model with hospitals, they weren't, they weren't profit.
They, no, they, they lose money, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
They sell, the more they lose.
Okay, thank you.
Just in the fact that was provided on the second page and give some break, breakdown of what the other counties are doing.
Thank you very much. Alright, with that, I think we um, uh, oh, anybody from the public wish to speak? At this point in time. You all set? Okay, I don't think there's anybody on Zoom. And so we're gonna end up going into non-public.
Yes, I move to enter from non-public person to ninety-one, call him three.
Second.
Most of it made and seconded, all goes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll be going in non-public. Anyone need a minute?
I'm good.
Okay. We're going out of non-public, Commissioner Coyle has some motion.
We had five non-publics, different topics, uh, with respect to the first two, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely. Because it could adversely affect the reputation of a member, uh, other than this board. Um, and individual other than this board, and um, there's no, uh, no finite timeline. There's sensitive information that you never.
Some motion has been made to seal the minutes of the five.
Nope, the first two.
I'm sorry, first two.
On the basis of rep- reputation.
Second.
Some motion's been made, seconded on, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
I vote yes.
With respect to the remaining three, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely because it could ren- render our proposed action ineffective. And we have no timeline in any of those three banners.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And move to adjourn.
And adjourn, I would say aye.
Aye.